On the agenda tonight. Roll call. Okay, first, first item on the list tonight, uh, resolution twenty-four oh five, accept Carrie Brady's resignation letter.
Make the motion.
Do not accept the resignation letter because it's not signed on second though.
Motion second, yeah, roll call please.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four oh six, accept Carrie Brady's resignation letter.
Make a motion, we don't accept that because it's not signed either.
That's her.
I'll say the second motion.
Alan?
Here.
Okay, uh, in talking with the state auditor that does the state, that does the city general, that overlooks the city water audit, uh, the countant wanted us all if we could have a what kind of audit?
Agreed upon procedures.
Agreed upon procedures audit because it's a lot cheaper. And she said no. Which is fine, we always do have a full audit, but Turner and him said their audit's so simple, everything's always so clean to do one year to save some money. But the auditor said no, so, uh, Turner, Rogers, Manning, and Pliler, and I know somebody put on Facebook today, you can't have, I can't have anybody work with me, it's killing me, this Pliler isn't kidding to me, I'm sure y'all don't ever have anybody with the last name, same last name as y'all. The Pliler in that firm is not kidding me, but he does not do our, who does our books?
Eric Kenny.
No, who does our, I mean, I'm sorry, our, from Turner Manning, who does our audit?
Mr. Rogers.
Rogers is the one that does our audit, there's four different auditor, accountants in that firm, and Rogers does ours, that he's been doing this for...
Five years now.
I used to work in growing up.
Blake Rogers.
Yeah, so, we need to sign the acceptance letter for him so he can get our audit started for last year. So if y'all will approve that, please.
I make a motion.
Have a motion to accept the, uh...
I'll say.
Roll call? Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You can back up the, get put it to me. All right. Next thing on the agenda is the, uh, animal control discussion, I hope we got a lot of discussion on tonight. I want to make a few matter of fact comments that are not disputable, they're the way, the facts of the way it is. The Glenwood, the maximum capacity of Glenwood Animal Shelter is fourteen dogs. Animals that are at the shelter are city property. The animals bought into the shelter, they're, all animals bought in the shelter, uh, the pound is a, uh, a euthanasia, if we can't get rid of animals clinic, and that's been the way it's been the ordinance history years. Hopefully, we're going to discuss and do some other things tonight to get rid, to, to take these dogs someplace off of city property. But that's the ordinances we run under, and we haven't been running under that for the last year. Uh, as of five twenty-nine, we went there two days ago, there's forty-seven dogs up there today, unless y'all got rid of something since Wednesday. So as of this moment, in a shelter that can hold fourteen dogs, there's forty-seven dogs up there, we have a problem Houston. Now then, uh, the dogs have been brought in and brought out, and Paul's has helped tremendously, and some other people that are, may or may not be part of Paul's have helped take care of the animals. And, uh, we appreciate all that, but they're all, some of these animals have been kept at homes and are all getting, have all got bought back, and I don't know what exact day they all got bought back up there, but as of today, there's forty-seven dogs up there. And we can't handle forty-seven dogs up there. So, uh, we're gonna open the floor up for discussion, and, uh, I'm gonna let, April, do you want to talk first, or you want to let some people ask some questions, or, or how do y'all want to do this council? April has got a possible solution to this, uh, and I, I appreciate the Brady's, and I'm sorry they've got upset with this, they've worked hard on the council, they've worked hard on Paul's. And I don't really know where all the confusion's come, uh, but hopefully we get that brought out and open and get something that's clear to them. April, we'll let you start. Move her on mic.
Okay, first of all, one of our participants in the audience, and Mayor Pliler has already kind of paved the way.
They need you to get the mic so the computer can hear you.
One of our audience participants, and Mayor Pliler, has already paved the way about the power of social media. Um, when I walked up, I introduced myself as with Paul's, and Mr. Rick Digger's asked me if I was to save this. Okay, we have a problem in this town, and, uh, problem in this town is domestic terrorism. Okay?
I asked you, I asked you that because you had the following star.
No, that's not a following star, you asked me that because of the Facebook post from Lacy, we're gonna tell the truth, and we're gonna shame the devil here today, okay?
Come on, give me a break.
All right, I'm deeply saddened, as I watch the division of our organization unravel due to lies, domestic terrorism, and social media. Out of a hundred possibly thousands of slanderous posts a day, I only want to address the facts that can stand up in a court of law. Although, which will be demonstrated on here, is merely a drop in the bucket. I have been with Paul's one year, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and it's been a year of drama, lack of appreciation, lack of accountability, and confusion. Yet taking care of these animals brings me great joy. Out of an entire year, I have filled in for animal control daily and on weekends and on holidays without complaints to our city. I attended a council meeting a few weeks ago, which actually was April first. Trying to express this dipty because I saw this situation coming, but to no avail, I was ignored. My words didn't come out right, and I'm grateful to have a second chance today to express those rights. What is the legal definition of domestic terrorism? It involves criminal acts dangerous to human life on U.S. soil that appear intended to coerce a civilian population or influence in effect of the conduct of government. When you slander public officials on, on social media platforms and other people to become a conflict of interest, you evade the law, that is a crime, okay? It is illegal for someone to use a text app pretending to be you. It is illegal for someone to use a text app pretending to be you, screenshotting conversations, and sending to other people, that is illegal. All this is publicly sourced information, so anyone needs a compliment, you just Google, everybody should be Googles more. Slander, the action of a crime, making false spoken statements damaging to a person's reputation. Lacy Guyton has slandered the Brady's to the point that they're giving up on the, our organization. They've been publicly humiliated, um, the things that have been said, not everybody has a backbone that strong to stand up to that kind of stuff. When people are constantly slandering and slandering, and it's not just the Brady's, she's slandered members of, of government, she's slandered poor Ms. Brenda, Mayor Pliler, she's slandered you, she's slandered me, she's slandered Dustin. Dustin's a conflict of interest, Greg gets slandered, all the rest of officers, poor Brenda been drove through the mud. This lady does this and tells lies, but delusion of people are a threat to society, this is, this is true. So, if you're posting a hundred and twenty or two hundred Facebook posts a day, that means you're not tending to your children, you're not cleaning your house, you're not doing what you need to do, you're not paying bills, you're on government assistance, but yet you're a sovereign citizen. None of these things are addressed, and this is why I'm left dealing with all of this right now. If you flip to the next page, Mayor Billy Pliler has been slandered by her, Brent Stags, Ms. Brenda, all of Pike County's officers, judges, and city workers, which provides manipulation tactics to avoid prosecution to the need of officials to recuse themselves. This is what's happening, this is domestic terrorism. I'm concerned for my safety, and I'm saying this publicly because I haven't been allowed to file any grievances, reports, or anything against her because the judicial system doesn't want to do anything with her. I'm concerned for my safety, and I'm saying this here in public. Lacy Guyton is obsessed with witchcraft, posting the grave sites of my dead family members. She has publicly posted that God and Jesus told her to do this, threatened Kerry that she would die in six months. Other rescues refuse to help us because the torment and the terrorizing she displays upon stop animal cruelty in Malibu, especially in reference to Ms. Mary Ann Taft, who is now deceased. Lacy Guyton proceeded to still harass this lady from beyond the grave publicly on Facebook. Lacy seems to have a grave obsession with witchcraft and death, mixed with delusion to the point she texts herself pretending to be other people to validate her claims, which in times make me very cautious, I really fear for my life, honestly. I reached out to other rescues, this lady said that she apologizes, but she did not want to get involved with us because of Lacy. Now, I provided evidence of all this, this is not just hearsay. Lacy recently posted, "Don't let the Brady's of April fool you," she has a multi-million dollar trust fund, and posted my, my dead grandfather's grave. Okay? I had tried to send her, um, this is a cease and desist, she refused to cease and desist. This is a copy of the cease and desist letter, she refused. Okay? She, she said that, when she, she says when she goes out calling these things publicly, it's because she's done her research and prayed about it, and even argued with Jesus about it. The story has to be said.
I know it has to be said, but we're here dealing with the...
This is why, this is why, they were banning shit because of these things.
Listen, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with you, but let's just get to the animal part of it.
Okay, well, okay, you have everything, so you can review it.
I do, I promise you.
You can review it, and I have everything, and I am moving forward with, with other measures because I will not be harassed to the point of what I do and harass that. I mean, anytime a stranger walks up to me at a council meeting and says, "I'm a Satanist," you know the power of Facebook, right?
Yeah.
Okay?
Just for the record, I think the way that, 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 um, the social media stuff, people trash everybody, I think it's very sad.
It is sad.
It is sad.
It is sad, and what disappointed me also was Mayor Pliler, Pliler did clear up in the paper, um, I was saddened to see the post on the Glenwood page to say that the dogs got dumped and people just put up makeshift shelters, that's not what happened.
I wrote that.
Yeah, well, that's not what happened.
Okay, I, I, um, I, I'll clarify why I wrote, in fact, I already did.
I mean, I, I know what it said, but I mean, that's not what happened, it started her on the frenzy.
Right, well, I didn't know that, but I, the only reason that it was even written was in response to a, to a video that, that there was some kind of separation or something between Paul's, or Paul's had been run off, or something like that.
Well, Carrie and Ryan have decided that, that their pasty would torch to me and my sister, which my sister was also slandered, my sister is a lieutenant for the federal department of justice. Lacy had slandered her, saying she has a brain tumor and a broken neck, and she's not really my sister. I mean, it goes on and on, I know you stopped me, you don't want to hear it, but, but the police don't want to hear it, the judges don't want to hear it.
It's not that I don't want to hear it, but we're...
So what happens if I snap and do something, y'all gonna arrest me, right? Right?
Okay, let me, let me read through this right quick, just, just, because I, I did write it, and I could have not even written it, it was a rough draft, is what it was, and it was basically, as the facts were seen that I seen, that, that I knew of, and, and, uh, the way it was come in, so, on Tuesday, someone dropped off slightly less than fifty dogs. Okay, I, I, I don't know how many there was, so I used very vague, I don't know what persons, what entity dropped good things on it. After setting up makeshift shelters, sure, I could have used temporary shelters, but I mean, you would both agree, they're not permanent shelters, it's up there. Everything was bought from Plilers, I'm sure. We're only able to properly house fourteen dogs at a time, totally accurate, while giving them the treatment they deserve, that's accurate. It's a very complicated situation, that's accurate. We're working to try to resolve this the way our local ordinances and state law requires, that's accurate. Please be patient with us, accurate, remember we did not ask for this, we never accepted custody, we knew about it after they were there, on multiple dogs, don't know how many dogs, done on multiple dogs. After it occurred, we will get taken care of in due time, thank you so much for your patience and understanding, and I stand by that thing a hundred percent for, for a rough draft. I didn't know if it was Paul's, if it was Spots, if it was a, a certain, a person, another entity, I don't know.
Yeah, but then, that's when here comes the, yours is welcome, Paul's of Glenwood, step around and find out, like, she takes responsibility for our demise.
It's really sad.
It's really sad.
Social media is even...
It is, but it's sad the way she's directing Kelly's life, saying everybody ain't messing with her, and Kelly couldn't take it anymore, and that, not only by her having grandchildren coming and things to do, it's not the only reason she was dying, but it is a problem. It is a problem, and until the problem in the community gets solved, okay, now let's talk about getting the dogs out of there. That, right now, while we sit at this meeting, I have paid people to start moving things, they're getting moved onto the land, I've been making preparations, I had to wait on cement, I had to wait on other factors, and everything, stuff like this is the source of the problem. The source of the problem is the community. Until people don't, they need to euthan- not euthanize, I'm sorry, they need to stay and neuter their animals, that should be an ordinance, that should be a law. They don't keep them on leashes, people get touched and let them run wild, and they don't hold themselves accountable. Until that gets fixed, we could kill every dog at the shelters today, tomorrow it will be full. Until the problem gets solved, the problem is in the community, the problem was here long before April Falcon ever made it here, I just tried to make it better. For a whole year, I selflessly worked at their shelter with no pay, like, like a dog, literally, fourteen hours a day. There's no way you can take care of animals, eight hours a day, ten thousand dollars a year, that's, that's inhumane and impossible. The problem is in the community, until that gets solved, you're gonna always have animals, and then animal control doesn't show up consistently, I've done their job a whole year, I know. So you're gonna have feral animals all over the town, this is a tourist town, you think people want to come here and see stray animals all over? Why don't you make a dog park, why don't you make it an animal friendly town? These people who travel with their pets will want to come here and spend more money, that's what it's about. But until you get the problem in the community solved, the problem, we just tried to help make it better, but we still got kids who don't mind over it, that's what I'm trying to say with stuff like this. But I do plan on getting them all out, I'm making provisions for every last one of them out of my pocket, I'm purchasing land with my own money, and I'm getting them out of there, it's gonna be a sanctuary, it won't be a shelter. And I'm already catching havoc in Montgomery County because they don't want a sanctuary there. So it's like, okay, everybody hates us for trying to save animals they don't want. So do you understand my position and why I'm always so upset?
Is it complicated, sad, too, right?
It is, it is, it is, and, and until stuff like this stops, and I mean, with, with no kind of reprimanding, people cannot just do this, you can't slander a whole town, I mean, look at the effects of it, I got accused of being a mistake just before I walked in, still I love the Lord Jesus Christ. I don't practice witchcraft because I'm from Louisiana, and I'm caught in lies on social media, what I'm trying to tell you, I, she's breaking laws, I have proof that she is, so is she gonna be allowed to keep on?
I, I want to, kind of, I want to, how many tickets, how many tickets in the city are there, you told me a lot back in normal amount, the city real places, real, they go to a normal amount.
Well, not just the city, the city of Carolina State's got eight, eight tickets to that...
But what she does, I'm sorry to say.
More than, more than, I'm not sure how many they wrote.
But what she does is she'll post a judge's name, and she'll post his name, and everybody else's name involved, and that becomes a conflict of interest, so then they have to call in people from, and that's how she gets under the system, she's a master manipulator.
Okay. All that is probably true, and that's part of the problem, but we've got to get to the, we've got to get down to how we're gonna get down to control shelter, back under control, or the pound back under control for the city. And, uh, the, now, I want to clarify this a little bit of stuff, the city's feeding fourteen dogs, taking care of fourteen dogs in the shelter, and Paul's or whoever are feeding right now and taking care of the rest of the dogs. So, and that's good, but, you know, we went from, I think where this started from, the city, I didn't go up there and check every day, and, you know, the dogs were coming in, and some of the dogs that's got in the, in Paul's didn't come to the city, none of them. Some of them did.
Some of them were dumped.
Yeah, so, some of them were dumped in Montgomery County, some of them were dumped wherever, that's neither here nor there, they're here now, and they're on city property now. And, so, the council has not been tried, and we're not trying to be, I don't think the council is trying to do anything wrong, other than we can't, forty-eight dogs can't continue to live on city property. And so, and Lacy is saying she's gonna take all four, or, April, 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 April is saying, April is saying, you got me talking, boo boo boo. Anyway, April is saying she will take everything that's at the pound, we've got dogs in the pound that have been there two years.
You gonna say you gonna take all...
Now, now, wait, wait a minute now. You've got some of them that are old too.
Sure.
Spots had them before.
Judge Bruno, he's his one.
Do we have any kind of retirement program for the two towns?
That's what she's setting up, Montgomery County.
Yeah.
I'll help her set them up.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, I thought I had to be so feral.
Don't euthanize them. You're not being...
We just still want to be able to get through this and still be able to work together, but as of right now, you got twenty-seven animals sitting outside, you got three animals sitting in a trailer, not just supposed to be in the trailer, and you got four, you got actually seventeen sitting inside, but are building, like, houses for ten.
Right.
What you got to do, so?
Well, actually, right now, as we speak, um, I'm actually paying someone, they are moving, ten by tens, and put them on the ranch, ranch, tree, the trees, weeds, and everything, and cut the grass, but we are working on it right now, we plan on having the outside animals moved there at least by Monday. Then the building is up, so we need, um, dog doors cut out, we need flaps put up, we need air, insulation, and, um, heating and cooling, and plumbing done. So if anyone in the community is willing to help with that, you can speed that along.
At what point will it stall your process, okay, I'm, I'm a little hypothetical about it. Let's just say that the council, obviously for the sake of time, is trying to, you know, just, you know, maximize, not waste, but use time. Let's just say that the council said, all right, Miss April, uh, we are in favor of helping you, accommodating you, you've obviously worked hard to accommodate the city, so we're gonna try to return the favor, you're willing to take these animals, so we are going to, uh, not do any, what's the other date, thirty?
It's the thirty-third, thirty-third.
We're not going to do anything until, for the next ten days, to give you time to get the animals moved, at which point, we will begin the fifteen day countdown by state law, so we can get into compliance, is that a reasonable...
I would say that's very fair, and I would say thank you very much.
That would be fair to you.
Yeah.
I make that motion.
Because Mayor Pliler and his wife did come and speak to me in person when this, uh, blew up unofficially, and he assured me that that's not his agenda, to kill the animals, that, that was not, what you said...
It's not ever, it's not ever...
According to parliamentary order, you guys have a motion on the floor, there is no second, there should be no discussion now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, I have a motion on the floor.
Anybody second in that motion?
To give them a ten day rest period, and at that point, we start the fifteen day countdown. His final letter keeps our relationship working.
Okay.
Give me a second. Any, any other discussion on it?
Anything bad, or?
Anyone?
Well, it's...
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, you said the city could help move.
I think the city should, should be able to contribute at her disposal to a certain point, and, and let's try to get it resolved. We got a problem, let's get it resolved, get back to the state, the local ordinance compliance, at that point, we start doing it by our local ordinance according to state guidelines, and then we don't, we're not having this problem. This is Friday night, man, people got other things they can be doing, so let's move on. Uh, that we give them the ten days, I thought we just...
That already passed.
Yeah, yeah, it already passed.
But after the ten days, then we just start following state, local ordinance, and Chris will be the main person on that.
Just so I understand, just after the ten days, you're gonna start with fifteen, so I actually have twenty-five?
Ten, 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 after ten days, then we're gonna start the countdown over fifteen.
Yes, we got a lot, we, we got, I get calls on my phone constantly, we got so many to pick up right now.
I think it's very gracious.
Yeah, I do, I agree.
What I need, so I don't get people in town thinking I'm doing favoritism, are y'all authorizing me to let some of the city employees help remove the dogs? I need that in motion, so that's not something that comes back and says, "But Billy Pliler's doing something he shouldn't be doing," or, is that what y'all want me to do? Y'all tell me what you want to do, so I've got some direction, I don't want, all I need, somebody come up with Billy Pliler out there, got all these people...
A, a, a suggestion, I would say that maybe you guys allot forty hours of employee time to doing that, that could be...
I don't think we need forty hours.
Okay, so whatever you need, ten hours, like, like, if it's, if it's two employees for five hours, that's ten hours of employee time.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and you're willing to volunteer your time for nothing, but you're just gonna need some help with moving the camp stuff, and so...
Right, we need some manpower.
I definitely think it's very reasonable, I, I'll make that motion, if, you know, I'll make it, that's why we got a motion on the floor.
Okay, then you're gonna use the city employees to help move, or?
Forty ten, how many hours?
How many hours?
I'm gonna say twenty hours. And if we need to go back and reauthorize more, we'll reauthorize more.
You have a second? I'll say it. Any other discussion?
Jimmy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we, uh, during that, can we open the floor, like, we got a lot of different papers, but, have you just let them voice, just open the floor to the town's people?
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, if anyone can't even say, so it stays on the night, on the recording, just come up here, you're more than welcome to come and listen. Today been a good night to make some comments on what we want to do in the future. I mean, we've done an ordinance and all, and we're gonna abide by it, and, and we are a shelter, we are, I mean, we're a pound, and if the dogs aren't gone, and, now, it's my understanding that until we hit the fourteen dogs, we're not worried about trying to get rid of them, hoping we can get rid of them, but once you hit the fourteen dog limit, we can't go pick up any more dogs, the fifteen days starts counting. And then we're gonna have to put down, by whoever's taking care of the kennel of dogs, explain that, Chris, Chris used to do this, so, uh...
Well, I mean, you got fourteen pens open, right? Okay, so, say you've got two or three that's been there fifteen, twenty days, I used to keep them all protected off the mountain. If I got fourteen pens full, and then I've got two animals to go pick up, I don't have anywhere to put, so you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to make a call which animals you got, you got to make room, you don't have a choice, and it's just a sad fact, I mean, it's, I don't like to, I never did, but sometimes you have to do that, this is a never ending cycle, unfortunate. This is the way it works, I hate it, but...
When Spots was here, before Spots was here, if I understood it right, Glenwood used to have to euthanize about ninety percent.
Ninety-five percent of animals.
That were brought in the kennel was euthanized, with Spots, and y'all, uh, Paul's has got a lot of dogs out, but I tell you what, it got overrun, I think the goodness of their heart kind of overwhelmed it because we started picking up dogs that wasn't anything to do with the city, and now they've kind of become, am I speaking out of context, April?
No, it's true.
You picked up some dogs that were in other counties and others, well, that, two other counties I know, Love Park and Montgomery both got dogs that Paul started taking care of, and now those are, that's part of the dogs that's all appeared back up here, they wasn't even city dogs to start with, that, but, uh, you know, and we can't, if somebody's got a better idea of what to do with these dogs, so we don't have to euthanize them. She's gonna have, when she gets these dogs moved, you're gonna have sixty dogs in her sanctuary in one year.
Which, I do respect, people would rather, okay, they could rather die dogs in the sanctuary setting than a, I call it dog jail, than a, than a jail housing setting, because they have room to run around, they're not, um... Because they have room to run around, they're not, um, if you take a domesticated animal and put them in that shelter, you're gonna have a very disformed animal in. It's, it's, it's a better setting, it's more favorable for adoption, it won't be open to the public, it'll be like appointment. And I think Montgomery County is kinda freaking out, like, oh, you bring animals back here, we don't have artists, but it's not gonna be like that, it's gonna be very safe, it'll be beautiful.
When they're walking or here, you know what I'm saying, I mean, you gotta just handle it.
Yeah, hard to say.
Public comment, my name is Dr. Kyler Dillard, I'm a veterinarian. Uh, I will work with them, I have, I have no association with them in trip today, but I will now, and we will get this handled. One recommendation I have is that you guys reopen the city ordinance and make it where euthanasia of animals is optional, not mandatory, after a certain timeframe, so that they can be sent to their own field shelters as well. Because if it's written that it's mandatory to euthanize, then you can't even offload them to a sanctuary or another field shelter. It's not, okay, the other thing would be, it would probably behoove the city of Glenwood to just operate your pound as a pound for lost pets and make some kind of a deal with these folks to take the ones that never got reclaimed, and, and even if you had to pay them to do that, rather than keep them there for a year or two years.
I don't, we're not gonna keep them.
Well, I, but you know what I mean, right, like, there, there could be, there's opportunities to make this work real well.
If somebody wants the dogs, they need to come get the dogs before we have to euthanize them.
Right, well, I've made arrangements with Tommy Wright to use his clinic to give spay neutered clinics once a month, maybe during town, uh, lower cost one, we'll see what we can do about that as well.
And Spots is still doing spay and neuter clinics.
They do it twice a year, twice, three.
So we still have three times.
Three now, it was two, so they're doing three?
They have at times done three.
But we still have Spots in function doing spay and neuter clinics, so.
They wanted, they want them to do twice as many, and they can't get here for it.
Yeah, so we, as many as that can be done, that's still happening, and if you can help on the other, we don't want to see a dog put down, but at the days, at the days, from the days come, if somebody wants the dogs, if you want them in a sanctuary, come get the dogs and.
Well, what's sad about it is to adopt an animal out of the shelter out here, before the animal can even leave the shelter, it has to be altered and a rabies vaccination. Well, when you start looking at what the vet charges to do, altercation still, at a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty dollars a pop, depending on the size of the animal, or whatever it is, and then a rabies shot on top of that, a lot of your, a lot of people look at that and go, well, I don't know about that, you know?
Well, we may be able to get some grant money for some of that.
They got.
Now, another thing you can do is take a three hundred dollar deposit for people and let them get the dogs spay neutered, and when they should come back with the paperwork, they get their money back. Because then they could take it to someone who's less expensive and get it done, and they're not gonna run out on their three hundred dollars.
You probably, you probably won't get two people to do that.
Well, yeah, yeah, now, right, we're seventy-five for dog adoptions and fifty for puppies. That doesn't even cover spay neuter or shots, so we actually coming out of pocket, upside down every time, and that's what people don't realize, we spend more out of pocket money than anything.
We can probably get some grant money to pay for spay neuters, like, Mr. Baynam might be able to do that.
Spots is fortunate enough.
Because he would like, he, he's the one that wants to do four clinics a year instead of two, he's the one that's sponsoring that, so he would probably sponsor vouchers for spay neuters here for local vets.
If we live here tonight with a working relationship with her, obviously she spends a lot of time on this thing, obviously a year don't help, that's a working relationship, that's got a lot of potential. Uh, and if we can live here tonight with that, with a plan in mind, and if that doesn't, uh, I don't, it looks like it's a win-win-win, I'll wait around for.
You, you have repaired your relationship with her tonight, I don't even know where I can tell you.
I, I, I don't leave the door either, though. Guys, I did it for a long time, and it really sucked putting ninety-five percent of the animals down, I'm just gonna tell you right now, and when Spots showed up.
It feels like you're.
Away from ninety-five percent to three percent, and that's the goal, that's what we really want to do here. I don't know why it's all blown up saying that all we want to do is put the animals, that's not the truth. The simple truth of the matter is, if we can't move them out of the shelter, we gotta make room, because it's constantly animals running around here that we've got to pick up, we don't have a choice.
I've got people.
Answer that.
Got people upset to me right now, we, you need to come pick up dog over in my neighborhood. And somebody jumped on me, I said, I can't do it, figure out the best thing you can do, we can't put any more animals up there.
One, one thing, you know, you got people that, it's kind of a tourist town to a certain degree, you got people that live out of town, uh, the mayor sees the kids a few times a year, they pass away, and their dog's loose or whatever, out of its normal habitat, you know, and so it might take them a few days to figure out where that dog went, how to reclaim that dog, you know, we don't want to put them four figures pets down because of, of bad situations, make situations worse.
See, I've been researching, you know, you drop by right there for Saturday, you got free dogs given away. I've, I've made the comment, why can't we stop, and they say you can't do it in the back, that's private property. But there should be a way you can put up something where they can't come in and give away do- I mean.
Why, why, why is there probably giving away dogs, that's, you can't take away people's rights.
No, I'm just saying, because they're.
To have a dog or to give away a dog, they're giving away, they're not dumping them, those people are the responsible ones, they're not the people that are, that are your problem. I've actually recommended to people to go to rights and give away a dog. Remember when I was a kid, they'd just put them out there in cardboard boxes, nobody even sat with them.
And see what I.
You had a dumping school.
Yeah, it's like, say, when I was with Animal Control, Chris, you'd see them down there, and people come give, you see that same person here, and they're, I was trying to run the ticket, they're like, it's not my dog.
Well, see, that's, that's, that's a different situation.
That's why I, I'm saying, you can't, but that's the problem you run into, you see them down there at rights picking up on Saturday, you're on their doorstep on Monday, and they're refusing to insert dog, you watch them leave with it. It's just a going process.
Right.
All right, has anybody else got a comment?
I'm curious about the sanctuary thing, is that gonna be in the city limits of Glenwood?
Nope.
No.
It's gonna be moved out.
That's a question. In city limits of Glenwood, you can't have, according to ordinance, the four dogs for house.
Or household.
How many cats?
Four.
How many bearers? How many bearers, oh, it's four fur bearing animals total?
I'm sure it's what it says, all the truck here.
How many birds?
It may just say, it may just say feline or canine, although.
Without permission, it says. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I know one lady's got ninety, is it incorrect that, I know the city people pay on our water bills for the dogs, is that only city residents? So there's no, any collective accounting, so we don't, we should not be taking care of county dogs?
Not supposed to. The extra on the water bill rule is power protection.
Yeah, and pause has been.
It does say feline or canine over the age of six months.
Gotcha, how many?
Four feline, feline.
Or felines or canines.
Over the age of six months.
Six months.
You're allowed to, um.
Without permission from the city.
Section two.
All right, have we got any other questions or any, any other comments? I mean, if y'all want to work, make it work better, we're all for it, yes, sir.
Uh, Bruno's sponsored now, he's been there still only three years, so they not in whole group of dogs, so they're big shame that he spent two of his three years in, you know, and.
Well, yeah. Where, she's moving the dogs, so it don't matter, but we have some people say, I'll sponsor a dog, give you the fifty dollars for adoption, and we say, but don't pick a dog, but that don't help the situation. Taking a fifty dollar sponsorship from somebody trying, I'm gonna say, don't give us fifty dollars to feed them, you have fifty dollars to feed them, but don't say I'm sponsoring a dog. Because if you're not, if you're not taking a dog out of the, up there, you haven't helped anything. Fifty dollars buys some dog food for a month or two, or fifty dollars won't buy a day's worth of food.
Get back for one now.
Yeah, for forty-eight dogs, I know, I bet, I bet fifty bucks may not buy two days worth of food.
I would like to say I appreciate everybody's kindness, and I think we resolved most of this, and I make a motion.
Unless anybody else.
There's that one, sir.
Comments, please, if you do, speak now, please, we'd like to hear it.
Speak now, and don't bitch about it on Facebook.
The thing I'd like to do is get, we need, we need to get positive on the word, it says, and how negative we can take it on Facebook.
I ain't doing it on right now.
The thing that gets me about Facebook, and I'm gonna make this comment, it's not the local people I worry about seeing Facebook posts. You got people looking to come Glenwood all the time, and when you put it on, when it gets around, a post that somebody sees and you start, everybody's trashing Glenwood, that's the worst advertising this town can ever have. The trash post, I wish would stop. And I, that's everybody's way of getting even, or whatever they call it on Facebook, is to, see, I'm running down when you dig somebody, and I might say, that's not good.
Bro, Howard, and it's real evil.
But anyway, um, any other comments, and I should have said that last day, maybe, I feel strong about it.
Well, if you get rid of a dog, like at the pound up there, do y'all chip them before you give them to the people?
We have that third.
Identify it if someone dropped it off.
We do have that.
Yeah, we have that third amendment.
I wouldn't make that a mandatory.
Yes, yeah.
We give, you give it to you then?
As far as the ordinance reads.
You know who dropped it.
We don't really have ordinance for that, but as far as following, like, laws, it just has to be altered in a rabies vaccination. By, and the rabies, rabies vaccination has to be done by a licensed vet, not administered yourself. So, that's it, that's all.
Some cities do that.
But not where next is.
It should be microchipped, I mean, the animal that I got, that I picked up ten, twelve years ago, from, uh, matter of fact, I picked it up, brought it into Spots, I paid the fifty dollars to have it, uh, altered, I paid for the rabies shot, I paid an adoption, and, um, I actually donated another fifty dollars to Spots down from out, and I kept her for twelve years till she passed away. I mean, and that's the way it should be, and she was microchipped when, uh, you know, during all that too.
I mean, I know he does the microchipping because my daughter moved, paid to go to college, and she could not have the dog on campus without chipping, he does do the chipping there.
Well, that's what.
You do.
I'm just thinking, if someone gets tired of dogs like they do.
Correct.
And they throw it out.
Yep, right.
You could go to that person.
Yeah, you could go.
You could get them, here's what they tell you.
A vet hazard.
Yes, but here's what they tell you, they tell you they gave the dog away, that person abandoned it.
The ultimate goal is to get back to this right here, unfortunately, we've got a few things we've got to work out, because the city license deal needs to be in effect. You got an animal in the city of Glenwood, you need to have it licensed, that'll help us out, because all them licensed, we, we built programs, put them all in there, and they'll be tied back to that animal, tied to your address, tied to your name, and we need to get back, we need to actually do it, not get back to, we never have.
Well, I would, I would like, I mean, I know we're not, we're not supposed to be discussing business now, because y'all just adjourned the meeting. All right, 'cause, um, I would like to see it as an identification fee, not a license fee, because I am so tired of taxes.
That's fine, too.
And unless that dog or cat gets a sex change, you don't need to reidentify them every single year. And I've done a lot of cats sex changes, and let me tell you, you cannot tell they're not female when I'm finished with them. That's a true story. I'll spike you later.
I'll say.
I'll give a second to adjourn, roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Adjourn.
Thank you guys for coming.